Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Burke County Board of Commissioners for Tuesday, March 20, 2018. I'd like to ask you to silence your cellphones and devices if you have those with you tonight. And we'll note that all commissioners are present along with attorney, county manager. And we're glad to have Lance Riddle tonight with us, taking care of the clerk's duties in the absence of our clerk who is at an educational conference. With all that said, we're happy to have Pastor Ed Stevenson with us tonight from Arnie's Fairview United Methodist Church to bring our invocation. And following that, we'll be led by the Pledge of Allegiance by Chesterfield Elementary School, who is led tonight by Principal Charles Williams. So let's stand together for the invocation.
Almighty God, we appear before you this first day of spring in the year of our Lord 2018, thankful that it's here. Lord, we just thank you for these men who have given themselves to tend to the polity and the machinations of this beautiful and wonderful county here in the beautiful western North Carolina, God's country. Lord, we thank you for these men. We thank you now for each one gathered here. We ask that you go with us throughout the rest of this meeting and that you bless each and every one of us. Father, I just ask that you do remember and to remind us who we are and whose we are. We ask all of this. We make our plea in the name of the One who has saved us all, your Son, our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Guys, come on down and lead us in our prayers.
(Clerk) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
All right, y'all, come right here and stand. We're gonna come down and make the pick. All right, let's give these guys a little... (Applause) All right, we'll move on with our agenda now. This brings us to item number four, approval of agenda. Gentlemen, you'll note we had one change in the agenda, motion or request to remove consent, item number three, as that applicant has removed their name from consideration. Item number three of the consent agenda to be removed. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Salute, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Wayne. All those in favor, signify, say a "a."
Aye.
Oppose, no. I believe that's all of us. Lance? All right. Brings us to item number five, approval of meeting minutes. Gentlemen, you've had the minutes for February 6, 2018, Board of Commissioners pre-agenda meeting, and February 20, 2018, our regular meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve these meeting minutes as presented.
Salute, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Scott. All those in favor, signify, say a "a."
Aye.
Oppose, no. I believe that's all of us again. This brings us to item number six, presentations tonight. We'll have a presentation from our community development on the Fontana Flora State Trail. An update, this will be presented by Scott Carpenter, our deputy county manager and planning director. Please, Scott.
Mr. Chairman, how are you this evening?
Good.
Gentlemen, it's a pleasure to be here. And you know I never miss an opportunity to talk about the trail. It's hard to believe that we've been working on this trail for five years now. And the construction of the trail was started almost two years ago. So come July, that's when we broke ground with actual construction. And to date, we have 10 miles of trail on the ground. We have 10 miles that are basically under contract right now. And now we're getting into the harder parts of trail building, which also become more expensive. We're starting to move ahead with bridges and boardwalks and things like that in order to close the gaps, you know, on the trail sections that we've built. So that's the Fontana Flora State Trail logo, as you all have seen before. And fortunately, it's starting to make its way around, and people are starting to notice it. We also have that feather at the trailhead, and people are now starting to identify the trail and the feather with the markings and other places. So the trail community tends to be big. Advertisers pick it up. Brewers and everybody love trails, and so they advertise it and pick it up for us as well. And so we're starting to get a lot of publicity. Things like this view, that's a view from the trail, is what's going to make our trail very popular. So this is at the county park, and that was one of the first real good views that we were able to build. And of course, as we move around the lake, we always have it in mind that we want to try to get views, 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 because that adds to the experience that people want to have. That was our vision statement that we wrote about four years ago when we were working on our master plan. Remember that, Johnny?
Yes, sir.
We met and met and met, and we created a master plan for the Fontana Flora Loop Trail at the time. So originally, the trail was only going around Lake James. Then we got special legislation, and the Board of Commissioners assisted, and our local elected officials, and we turned that into a state trail. And so that being the case, we hope to someday see it go from downtown Morganton all the way to Asheville, North Carolina. And of course, you know, it's also one of our goals is to create an ecotourism region and destination that people go to and identify as Burke County. And I think we're starting to move in that direction with all the meetings that we're having with state officials and locals and newspapers and others. So our trail, for those of you who don't know, is a sustainable trail. As the trail builders are out there, they follow very strict guidelines to ensure that the trail is gentle, that it's not steep. It's five feet wide, that it has a 3% out slope, so that water comes off the trail. It should require minimal maintenance. It's also a natural surface trail versus, you know, a paved greenway type of trail that you find in the cities and that type of thing. And of course, the trail, as time goes by, starts to blend in with the environment and with the mountains and whatever it's running across. So we also limit our slopes, which is very important for the user groups. So we limit it to 5%. It's what we try to stay at. Sometimes we have to go almost to 10% when we encounter something geographic that's problematic, and we have to overcome it on a steeper thing, because the terrain around the lake tends to be what we call mountainous terrain, and it's very steep, you know, it's rugged and that kind of thing. Went the wrong way here. So this is the trail. That was the first section that was after we built. That's Amy's son, if I can point at him right there. And that's the Boy Scouts that are walking on the trail. But essentially, that's the way it starts to look, and it'll start to blend in. That's the trail without the leaves, right after it's dug and cleared. So it's just five feet wide, and it's a natural surface. And let's talk about where we're at with the trail. So let's see if I can just point some more. So this is Harris Squishnet Road, right off of North Carolina 126, and the trail has been completed from here all the way to South Point. We just finished building the South Point section this week, as a matter of fact. And in that section, that's a very expensive section for us, we had to put cribbing in. If you don't know what cribbing is, that's when you have basically a mountainside. Then you have to build a wall, and then you have to fill in between the wall and where you've cut out into the mountainside. $90 a foot we had to do for 150 feet or so. So it ran us a lot more than we were hoping, but you have to close the gap. And South Point's an important one, so we just finished that part of the trail here. This already exists. These were all private easements given to us. That's private easement, going across Water's Edge, private easements. So a lot of people think, oh, no, you know, you all built that trail all on public lands? It's far from it. It's mostly on private lands that people have provided easement. So we come across these. These were given to us from Jeff Sernuto. That's 16 acres of easement that were dedicated to us here. And over here, Ben Van Hook dedicated about seven acres of easements. Plus, he built the trail and paid for building the trail through there. And he gave us a mini pocket park right here at no cost for trail users to use. So that was good stuff. And this was the first section of trail we built. This is the county park right here. Remember, we got that land from Crescent, 134 acres. And the trail was, this was the first section built right here. So that's built, and that's where that view was coming off of that I showed you earlier. So this is the Lumball Access area. We've been working on identifying trail markers there and identifying parking at that location. You all funded, whoops, where are we going here? You all funded the parking lot right here last year, and that's about to be finished up right now. And it's really a beautiful trailhead. The weather has really been problematic on the trail building since November. It's been hard to dry out. So what we find is, as we go around the lake, there is a ton of clay soil. And that clay soil tends to be hydrant, and it doesn't drain out very good or dry. And so we, you know, are having a longer time in moving forward. All right, so what we have here is county park. So if you remember, last year, we signed an agreement with Duke Energy, and they gave us 180 additional acres of land. And so now we have a county park that's essentially 330 acres. So that's a 40-year to 50-year lease. It depends on what happens with FERC on that, that is turned over to the county for management. And I think we might owe them a dollar, you know? I can't remember if we actually gave them that dollar. So that's what's going on there. We have an agreement in place that we got a grant for to build this section of trail here. And we have a contract that's getting ready to move this all the way through the state park, six and a half miles there. And that's with Tri-State, you know, out of West Virginia, the professional trail builders that have been working across many areas of this. So Carol Tingley tells me, she is the deputy director of state parks, that she is going to try to move up on their schedule the building of the bridge across the cove to help accommodate our trail. And they're also designing in elements that we designed in our trails, you know, rhododendron and black locusts and things on those trailheads. Whoops, that thing just wants to keep moving away. And this is an existing trail, but we plan on upgrading that trail to five feet wide. This is existing, but we're redoing that to five feet wide. We've also are moving the trail out here to Fontana Flora Whipper Will Derry's new location, and they're going to become a trailhead. And so that'll be, that'll be good, to be able to tie them in as a destination point. And they're out there, and it's a little secluded out there around the lake, as you all know. This is state park land. We have not designed this yet, because this area here was where we were having trouble closing the gap on the loop trail around the lake. So fortunately, I met with state parks, and state parks agreed to purchase 80 acres of land in here to add to this state park. So the 80 acres of land is in this area right here, essentially. And that will allow a connection back to Benfield Landing Road, where the family campground is. And we'll be working with them for the layout of that trail. But that closes our gap, so this is major. And this is a $650,000 purchase. So that came from that bond money, remember the bond money that we fought for for trails? And that process went on and on. And so this land is on the repair area that Duke Energy is reinforcing the dams. And so because of that... (Inaudible). You all might as well have one of these, too, so you can just keep me in line here. So this is on Duke land, so we have to wait for that. This is the Lumball Dam. We're getting ready, we believe, to get final approval for crossing that dam. And it's gone back and forth. Remember, Duke Energy, for three years, said, you're not going across that dam. And then they said, okay, we'll work with you. Well, then they came back and told me, you can cross the dam, but you have to cross where you can't see. You have to be on one of those lower ledges of the dam. We said, that defeats the whole purpose of our five-year fight to go across the dam. So the chief engineer of Duke Energy that oversees all the dams told me that he is happy to come, and he wants us to have those views, and he will work with us to ensure that we have them. So we have a meeting with them in the next couple of weeks, and we will start that process. That's also going to require a lot of engineering and grants. Then we're back here on the last section, and this last section here is got an $800 and, I think about $850,000 grant. That's two grants. One of them is from the federal government, and one is a part-of-grant that we got, and that's for the design, engineering, surveying, and right-of-way acquisition along Powerhouse Road. And that, my friends, will complete the loop around the lake. We get in a lot of money on this section, but let me run on, because I know I'm taking longer than Johnny wanted me to. He told me I had five and a half minutes. So we've also, we haven't been idle. I know you think that we may have been idle, but we're now looking at moving the trail to see if we can go east or west from the lake. So I've had a number of meetings, and I've met all the property owners a couple of weeks ago between the lake and Morganton. Had about 26 property owners come out, had about 20 "noes," not coming through my backyard, you know, the NIMBY type of scenario. I had identified five routes to try to move the trail. All five routes had blocks coming in. So now I have to systematically look and find the weakness in that to see if there's a way to move it. So our goal is going to be to get to Glen Alpine first. We've also started meeting with the Marion to Lake James people, and we helped finance half of that. So we're financing the part of the study that Destination by Design is doing, and we're studying it to Black Bear. So I've already started meeting with the people on that. The easiest route for the trail to move is definitely going to be to Black Bear. So we already have over half of that guaranteed, including a major developer who also gave me all that other land, 15 acres, and he's going to let us have lake view as well as allow us access all the way across. So that's a major deal. And of course, the National Forest is another player, and wildlife, and Duke Energy. So we have all of them, and we're just going to lack a matter, I think, of maybe two miles of what we'll have to negotiate to close all the way to Black Bear. So that's a big deal, I think. All right. We're also busy working with McDowell County, Marion, Old Fort, Black Mountain, Buncombe County representatives, and we're assisting them in putting together a plan of action so that they can get the depot-to-depo section built. Believe it or not, not everybody talks and works together on projects and things, and that's what's been going on up there. And so we've been meeting with them, and now they're starting to move forward. And we believe that the trail will connect into Old Fort first now. We would have always guessed that Black Mountain is where it would be, but we're founding a lot more public lands and other opportunities to connect Old Fort up to the top of the mountain, and then it's going to be a longer process to get into Black Mountain. We're still trying to work with Asheville, get them more on board with looking at their section. But overall, that's where we're at. Wrong way again. So those are some of the highlights of the trail. I'm not going to read those to you, but I think the most important one is that it's a trail that ties together walking, hiking, strolling, biking, camping, fishing, swimming, picnicking, ecotourism opportunities, and regional attractions. I think that, in a nutshell, summarizes the whole thing. How much money has gone into the trail? This is what you all were waiting to see, right? So the Board of Commissioners, you fine gentlemen, believe it or not, have given $515,000 to the trail. $300,000 of that is in cash, and the remaining $215,000 is staff time, which I counted here. Most people probably wouldn't show that or count it, but I think it's fair, because that's the commitment that the county's making by allowing us to spend time and to build this trail. Crescent Resources, remember, they gave us a piece of land valued at $1,750,000. And Duke Energy, I believe they're well over $3 million, and they're going to more than double that as we move forward. So that was a $950,000 road into county park. That also includes the $1.2 million cash that they gave us to build the trail itself. And without that, we really wouldn't have moved very far. And then I did a very low estimate of $1,000 a month for the 180 acres of lakefront property that they give us. So that, I based that sort of like on a lease. I know it's incredibly low end, but at least it gives us something to work with. State grants, we've gotten $670,000. This number here for, those are RTP grants, recreational trails program grants, as well as a part-of-grant that we already have received. These don't include the ones that we're applying for that filled up half the agenda this time. State bond money, that's going to actually be $640,000 or $50,000. It may actually go a little bit higher than that, and that was to purchase land and easements to close the loop. Private landowner easements, I valued that at $10,000 an acre. That's probably on the low end, because when I cut through people's property, I devalue other sections of property while I increase other sections as well. So if I'm cutting off other land, I'm devaluing it. If I'm adding an opportunity, I'm increasing it. So we valued that private landowner easement at $1,000, and that would be $350,000. So that's a lot that people have given. These are things that people have given us, like Oak Hill Iron and the artwork and things that are being made by them. They're at a fraction of the cost of what these things are worth. So for instance, the sign at county park, that's a $30,000 to $35,000 sign every day. $5,000 we paid for that. The artwork across the bridges, we paid $5,000 for Lumball Bridge. That's $15,000 to $20,000 every day by a master like they are. So they've been good to us. Water's Edge built trail and gave us other things as well. So you total out those things, and they're $7.5 million. We estimate that once we get other grants and other things and finish out the trail, we're over $14 million investment going around the lake. Board of Commissioners' total investment on this will be $1 million. That's a 14 to 1 return on investment, which is good, because we're also building a major attraction and an economic driver for Burke County. At least, I think it's good. Just some quick pictures. That's the trail and some trail work. This is the, some of the design that we have incorporated with rhododendron and black locusts to help set our trail apart from other trails. This is how the trail gets built. Essentially, it's built with a mini bulldozer. It does the heaviest work, and then we have a track hoe, a mini track hoe that follows that thing, and it does some things. They also have hand lopping and shears. They have a chipper that's behind that. They finally, finally, they come with a roller, you know, like a heavy roller to roll across the trail. That's the kiosk, and that's the kiosk that's over at the county park trailhead. We also have one in over at Lumball Access area. And this is made out of black locust, cedar roof and western cedar on the undersides. So top quality, and I think some of the best-looking kiosks I've ever seen anywhere, as a matter of fact. There is the tree that was assigned for the park. And of course, what we try to do is we try to do some things that are unique so that they can get captured and then advertised. So people say, man, that's a cool feature. Did you see that Fontana Flora Trail? They did something different and neat, and it's top quality, and it's maintained well. There's your bench. It says, celebrating Burke County Board of Commissioners, Fontana Flora County Park and Trail Supporter. So we got that put out last week at the trailhead, and that'll blend right in as we continue to work that area. We have three more benches to be put out, but the weather's been so bad, we've had a hard time doing that. That's the first piece of artwork that was actually attached to the Lumball Bridge. Now that runs all the way across the bridge. It runs all the way across Canal Bridge, and it runs all the way across Bridgewater Bridge. 400 feet of custom artwork, and I think we paid about $25,000 for 400 feet. That's a long way, and it sets us apart from what most people are doing. And that came from Duke Energy. I see you looking, Maynor. This is a bridge that I've messed with that I would like to build over White Creek. This is a covered bridge, obviously, and this is rhododendron weave, same rhododendron weave as our bridges. And this is a cedar shake roof, and this is a steel beam. That'd be 50 feet wide, and that's being engineered right now. Actually, they're finishing up the engineering and the architectural work on that to put that together. We've applied for a grant on that, and we've also asked the Board of Commissioners to fund this as well, in case we don't get the grant, because this will leave a gap if we can't do something at White Creek. But it also becomes a tourism attraction, a major one. Covered bridges are big time, and they receive a lot of coverage and publicity. So that's that. Future trail attraction, one of the other things that we would like to do is we would like to do an Eagles Nest overlook at the county park that has a 360-degree view of shore off, the Black Mountains, South Mountains, the lake, and over towards... Actually, they're finishing up the engineering and the architectural work on that to put that together. We've applied for a grant on that, and we've also asked the Board of Commissioners to fund this as well in case we don't get the grant because this will leave a gap if we can't do something at White Creek. But it also becomes a tourism attraction, a major one. Covered bridges are big time, and they receive a lot of coverage and publicity. So, that's that. Future trail attraction, one of the other things that we would like to do is we would like to do an Eagles Nest overlook at the County Park that has a 360-degree view of shore off, the Black Mountains, South Mountains, the lake, and over towards Morganton to where there is a real Eagles Nest, actually, you can see from that location. So, we haven't done the cost or design on that yet, but that is something that we'd like to do in the future. And that is Roan Brew, the prettiest cow in the county. That's my cow, and she has nothing to do with my presentation, but I just wanted to share her with you. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a couple of questions for Scott. You know, you said this week, as of, as of this past week, we can, we can hike from the County Park to Harris Wisnet Road.
Yes, sir.
How far, how far section is that?
It's about three and a half miles. It's missing two bridges. And so, those bridges are ordered, and they're supposed to be constructed. The materials have been held up, but the, come April, the first week, all that material should be here. It's coming from the west, so it's western.
It's yellow pine?
What is it?
Douglas fir.
Oh, it's Douglas fir. And so, somehow, when it was ordered, it got held up, and I'm not sure why. But anyway, yeah, we'll close that gap.
How about onto Canal Bridge? How long do we anticipate that being?
From Canal Bridge to Harris Wisnet Road will be about 20 miles of solid trail. And of course, we don't know exactly until we build the trail and finalize layout.
Of course, I know we're waiting on that bridge from the state, but that's...
Yeah, well, Carol told me she will get us that bridge.
Possibly in two to three years.
Less.
Less, okay.
She's pushing that in 2019, so...
Okay. And then, another question I had, just, you know, when you, you know, just, you know, we're all pretty passionate about this, and you, you've already seen the crowds up there. And, you know, it's a big biking destination just on the main road there around the lake. Has there been any discussion with DOT to slow down the traffic from 55 to 45? Is that, because, you know, you're going to have people, trailheads, parking lots, you know, just looking down the road with increased traffic, safety concerns, people crossing that bridge at Lumbal, you know?
Oh, it's, they fly.
And so, just something that you may want to have a discussion with.
We have had that discussion very loudly at times on the bridge as people come flying by us. I believe that 126 in its entirety is not designed at 55 miles an hour, even though they claim it is, and you all know as well as I do, 55 means a lot of these are going 65. So, I think the speed limit, based on driving this 100 times, should probably be 40 miles an hour as you're coming around the lake. And we have had the discussion. I think we might need to do a resolution from the Board asking that the speed limit be reduced there since, you know, the state has failed to ever put in bike lanes for the safety of the bicycles. At least, that's what I think.
I agree.
Thanks, Scott. Chair.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Good report, Scott. I do, I think you saw my app go up, I guess, when you said you needed seven, seven million dollars more to complete that?
That's right.
Where do we anticipate getting that seven million?
I knew you would answer, ask that question.
So good.
I've, I know you after five years. So, most of that money is going to be federal grants, and the matches to those federal grants, they won't come from you all, we're going to be trying to get part-of-grants from the state. So, just like the $850,000 that we funded for the study of North Powerhouse Road, we expect to go to the same pot of money and ask for the construction side, and then we would ask the state to match that construction side with a part-of-grant. So, just that Powerhouse Road section is $3 million, and it's going to be probably a million and a half to cross that Lumbal Dam. But I'm telling you, if you can cross the Lumbal Dam with a boardwalk and those views, you have probably the best views in western North Carolina that are panoramic. And we're going to try that into a trailhead as well. I didn't mention, but we have identified 13 trailheads that we're going to try to move and put in, so...
Okay, it took five years to get this far. How, how many years to finish? Depends on the funding.
I believe we will have most of the trail, the natural surface trail, completed within, all the natural surface trail within three years will be completed, is my guess. And then, we're on to the road sections where we have boardwalk that's expensive, and we have to get the funding. And then, we have a side paved trail down North Powerhouse, which is going to have to be funded, and it might have to be funded in segments because the pot of money that we asked for goes to the Council of Government, and there's lots of other people wanting that money, and it's, you know, limited.
You talked about that 80 acres staying away from, it looks like we, it appears that we're away from the lake a good bit. Is that by design, or we just can't get the right of way against the lake?
So, it's by necessity. It's because the area around the lake has already been built up, and it's really almost a miracle that we're able to do a loop trail around the lake because the lake has been around, and it's been built up, and most places you can't get through. And people say, "No, and you can't come through here," and stuff like that. So, we've been fortunate. We have a couple of neighbors that are against the 80 acres, and they had some concerns about that, and so, we're going to talk about that, and we're going to work those things out so that they feel safe and good about the trail and about State Park coming in there.
Well, it is remarkable that you have got permission from so many people already on that. The final question, you mentioned that the parking lot was finished at the, I think at the entrance. How many, what's the capacity of that parking lot?
That one's only 13 cars. I think we undersized it, but we had no way of knowing what to go for. But we have also found where we can put an additional 13 parking spaces right beside this, fronting 126, and we'll be working with DOT to try to get permission for another entrance into the overflow parking, and that's just simply going to be a gravel overflow, you know, that ties in to that.
You said, that's the last question. You, you reminded me of another one.
Okay.
In peak season, what, what do we anticipate the volume of traffic to be?
We have no way of knowing. Right now, all the traffic you're saying, I'd say 70% is locals. And so, what's going to happen in a year or two, you're going to triple that or, or far more because the word will be getting out, the miles of trail will be increasing, the things that we're putting in for people to look at and see will be getting built, and it will become a destination. The other thing that I'm hearing is that we have the best trail in western North Carolina for experienced mountain bikers to take their wife and children and teach them how to ride. That ours is a non-threatening trail, it's not too steep, it's not too fast, it allows views and other things in a mild manner. So, that's a good thing to hear from these guys who know trails.
So, we're not, they're going to have enough parking places, is what I'm gathering.
That's right. It's, it's going to be tough, even though we try and we ask, we might actually have to buy another one. One of the things that I'm looking into right now is that Harris Wisnet Road, purchasing another property there at the road to expand the trailhead. The trailhead we can get in with our existing 60-foot easement would only be about eight cars, maybe, so...
So, hold on a minute, Mr. Chairman.
Other questions for Scott?
Scott, good work. We appreciate all you're doing.
Thank you, sir.
Gentlemen, entertain a motion to accept this information as presented.
Still moving, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That's everybody. Thank you very much. All right. This brings us to scheduled public hearings tonight in Community Development, zoning amendment ZMA 2018-01, and public hearing. This is going to be presented by the one and only Scott Carver.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board members. So, this is a request from Mr. and Mrs. Mike Williams, and they're requesting to rezone a portion of a parcel of land from its current R2 zoning to general business. And the applicant is proposing to rezone the front 1.2 acres of this. They're going to leave the back half R2 zoning, and they wish to place three 3,000-square-foot structures for mini warehouses on that property. The adjoining property does also have a mini warehouse there, so it's not heard of in the area. As far as the site analysis goes, the parcel is currently vacant, but it does have an existing 911 address of 1942 North Carolina 18-US 64. The total acreage is 1.95 acres, and there was once a single-family home on this property, but it has been demolished and removed from there. The property is relatively level, and it is void of vegetation, so it is ready for building with minimal grading needed. The property lies within a WS4 water supply watershed, which if, I'll remind you, means it, it can basically have a 24% pervious cover unless we approve it as a special intensity allocation, and it can have a 70% impervious cover. This is a warehouse type of project. There is public water that serves the site, and there is no public sewer in the area, so that means they will have to be approved by environmental health for a septic system, but of course, that'll be minimal since there's not, you know, normal commercial activity there. It's just going to be passive in nature. As far as the current zoning goes, you all have received this already in advance, so I'll be very brief. To the north, it's zoned R2 and general business. To the south is general business and R2. East is RMU, and west is R3, and there's a mix of uses around there, including pasture lands, residences, and businesses, as well as some industrial use there. And if I didn't say agriculture, agriculture as well. We have not had anybody call or ask about this rezoning, and nobody at the meeting came in opposition to it as well. Only one of the neighbors came, but he was supporting the project. He just wanted to understand that it wouldn't affect him in a negative way. This is in conformity with the Comprehensive Plan, and of course, the Comprehensive Plan that's in place is the Burke County 2016 to 2030 Strategic Land Use Plan. It is not in conformity, of course, with the Burke County zoning ordinance because R2 doesn't allow for general business activities, and that's the reason for this request. The staff recommendation on this was to approve and to recommend to this Board to approve, and the Planning Board met January 25, 2018, and they heard the request, and they also voted unanimously to recommend to this Board to approve this rezoning request. In order to do so, you would also need to adopt a consistency statement, which we have provided to you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Gentlemen, you've heard the information. Before I open the public hearing, any questions for Scott?
Mr. Chairman, I believe I asked all my questions during pre-agenda, so...
All right. All right, hearing none. I'll ask that we open the public hearing at this time. Anyone here tonight to speak to this item? Seeing and hearing no questions during the public hearing, I will entertain a motion on this item, gentlemen.
Do you need closing of the public hearing?
Close the public hearing. Now that the public hearing is closed, I will entertain a motion on this item.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt ordinance 2018-02, amending the Burke County zoning map and adopt the corresponding consistency statement. Consistency statement states, "The proposed zoning map amendment can be considered consistent with the Burke County 2016 and 2030 land use plan. The Burke County zoning ordinance is reasonable and in the public interest because the 2016, 2030 Strategic Land Use Plan identifies this area within the area of one of the economic focus areas. These economic nodes are small areas where commercial development is existing, and additional development of similar uses are encouraged. The subject parcel is located on North Carolina 18-US 64, a county thoroughfare. There is an existing mini storage lot adjacent to the subject parcel. There are also other commercial and industrial land uses in close proximity as well. On January 25, 2018, the Planning Board unanimously recommended approval of rezoning application ZMA 2018-01."
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Moore. We, gentlemen, you've heard the motion. All those in favor of the motion as read, please signify by the uplifted hand. That'll be five to zero. Thank you very much. This brings us to item number two, Community Development Zoning Text Amendment, ZTA 201801, in public hearing, again presented by Scott Carver. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this request first showed up, or we became aware of it in 2015 when McDowell County approached us about putting an intake in Lake James so that they could withdraw water, so that would make Lake James their water supply watershed, so to say. We had forgotten about it. We didn't know if they had moved forward with that or not, but we had come to the Commissioners, and we had discussed this, and we said that we would only support that WS4 classification. We would only support a WS4 classification. We wouldn't support a WS3, or WS2, or WS1, or something that was more restrictive. So, essentially, what this request did is it went to the state, and the state, you know, approved this, and so, it's now state law, and it's existing. And basically, what a WS4 water supply watershed does is it creates a area all the way around Lake James, but not below the dam, and for a half a mile and draining into the lake, it creates a critical area. And then, for five miles draining into the lake, it creates another protected area. So, what is essentially allowed is 24% impervious surface. Now, you can get up to 70% with that special intensity allocation that they would have to ask for. So, 10% of the watershed, you're allowed to build up to 70% impervious surface. It also creates a 30-foot buffer on the perennial streams that are coming into the lake and draining into the lake, and if you decide that you want to do the 70% higher density allocation, you have to do a 100-foot buffer on the perennial streams. Those are essentially the basic things. It doesn't really regulate uses and things like that except for dumps or, you know, disposal of, of dangerous fluids or anything like that. So, it doesn't regulate commercial, residential, and that kind of thing. So, that has already taken place. What it creates is, on the numbers, the WS4 critical area will be 988 acres, and the protected area, which is that balance area, will be 1,532 acres, which means that essentially 153 acres, people can come and apply for more density on that, up to 70%. The Planning Board met on this, and they discussed this at their January 25 meeting, and they actually voted three to one to recommend approval of the zoning text amendment. There was one member that voted against. He said he didn't like the state telling the counties how to regulate land. So, that was the reason for that. And so, there would also have to be a zoning consistency statement adopted for this, and of course, it does meet our ordinances. We already had WS4 water supply watershed in the zoning ordinances. I'm happy to answer any questions that I can.
All right. Thanks, Scott. Gentlemen, you've heard this information from Scott. Any questions before I open the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I have several. Scott, on your presentation on the buffer zone, you had both 30-foot and 100-foot on perennial streams?
Yes, sir.
Those are the streams running into the Lake James?
Yes, sir.
And what about the lake itself? Is there a setback, a buffer zone on the, on the lake itself, and how much is that?
So, this does not affect that. There is a 50-foot state buffer around the ent- There is a 50-foot state buffer around the entire lake that is a state buffer in place. So this does not affect that part of it.
Well, why would we have 100 feet further away from the lake and 50 feet on the lake on the perennial streams?
Because you can have multiple state laws and overlays on one area is the real reason. And so we already have a 100-foot buffer on the lake, so for us, it wouldn't make any difference. And then we have 125-foot setback on Lake James for structures.
So the 50-foot setback on the lake is in other documents and does not need to be included in this one, correct?
Right. That's right. We're not changing any of the state laws or anything. We're just adopting them and then enforcing them when somebody comes in to build.
If I owned or purchased land for specific or intended purpose, what kind of impact would this zone have on me if I've already visioned where I want my house, where da-da-da-da-da? How many of your residents or residents-to-be will be greatly impacted by this zoning change?
So virtually none, because the protected area is mostly national forest areas and already areas that are protected, so they can't build there anyway. The 30-foot setback would be the main thing that might cause somebody to have to move. But they, if they wind up in that situation, they can always apply for variance. But if they're going to apply for that variance, they have to go to Raleigh to apply for that variance. That's not a local variance. That becomes a state variance on a water supply watershed rule. So I don't anticipate that happening very often.
Okay. That's all. Mr. Chairman.
Other questions for Scott? All right. Here and none. At this time, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone here tonight to speak on this item? Seeing and hearing none, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to adopt an ordinance number 2018-03, amend the Burke County zoning ordinance in reference to zoning text amendment ZTA 2018-01, and adopt the following consistency statement. The zoning text amendment proposed by Burke County Community Development Department's staff to amend 2202.03 and 2203.04 and the Burke County zoning ordinance and the official Burke County watershed map. Number one, the text amendment is consistent with the 2016-2030 Strategic Land Use Plan, which has an environmental goal of protecting Burke County's natural environment through stewardship of its national resources. Number two, the text amendment will establish a water supply watershed in the area surrounding Lake James in order to protect the water quality for a proposed new water intake. Item three, the new watershed will consist of WS4-3 critical area and WS4P protective area to set forth by the North Carolina Environmental Management Commission. Number four, the text amendment will require the official Burke County water supply watershed map to be amended according to the newly established watershed as set forth by the North Carolina Environmental Management Commission. Item five, and final, the text amendment will establish certain development standards in which new land uses can be established within the critical areas and protected areas of Lake James watershed.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Gentlemen, you've heard this motion. I, Mayor, I'll entertain a vote at this time. All those in favor, please signify by the uplifted hand. And clerk, that'll be five to zero. Thus ending the Scott Carpenter Show for this evening. This brings us to item number three. This comes from the sheriff. Ordinance amending code relating to recommendations for ABC permits in public hearing. Mr. Sheriff, good to see you.
Thank you, sir. And I recommend Scott keep that cow in his pasture, because if it gets out in the woods and be on some hunter's wall, the head will be. Thank you, sir. And the sheriff's office is desiring the state access to the State Bureau of Investigations, Criminal Investigation, Criminal History records to be able to do a more complete criminal history check on the persons applying for ABC permits in Burke County. Without the ordinance, that's before you, we're limited in what we can do. And so I've asked that we do have an ordinance that I can get the full records checks on the applicants that are applying for the ABC permits.
Okay. Thank you, Sheriff. Gentlemen, you have had this ordinance in front of you, and before I open the public hearing, any questions about this matter? Seeing none, then I'll open the public hearing. Anybody here tonight to speak to this item? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on ordinance number 2018-04. Mayor made the motion to adopt ordinance number 2018-04. All those in favor signify by the uplifted hand. I believe that is five to zero. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, Sheriff. All right. Brings us to item number eight, informal public comments. Lance, any one tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, there is nobody signed up to speak this evening.
All right. Thank you very much. This brings us to item number nine, consent agenda. I'll ask County Manager Brian Steen to review the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, you have 15 items on your consent agenda tonight. BOC resolution supporting Marcy's law. Number two, BOC proclamation declaring Youth and Government Day. Item four, clerk, council on aging reappointments and removals. Item five, clerk, recreation commission appointments removal. Item six, community development accept STBGDA or DA grant agreement. Item seven, community development accept recreational trail program 2018 grant contract boardwalk. Item eight, community development resolution in support of application for the 2018 STBG-DA Call for Projects. Item nine, community development resolution in support of application to the 2019 recreational trails program Trailheads. Item 10, community development resolution in support of application to the 2019 recreational trails program Northwest Trail. Item 11, community development resolution in support of application to the 2019 recreational trails program Northwest Bridges. Item 12, community development resolution in support of application to the 2019 recreational trails program Covered Bridges. Item 13, resolution in support of application to the 2019 recreational trails program OHNHT Boardwalk. Item 14, tax department tax collections report for February 2018. Item 15, tax department release refund report for February 2018. And item 16, Western Piedmont Council of Government Fair Housing Assessment and Complaint Procedure. That concludes your consent agenda, gentlemen.
All right. Thank you, Brian. Gentlemen, you've heard the consent agenda is presented by our county manager. I'll entertain a motion to accept.
Submove, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Wayne. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. That's one no. Commissioner Taylor voting no on the consent agenda, Lance. All right. Items for decision. Again, we'll come back to the sheriff. A request for additional funds for inmate medical expenses. Casey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The sheriff's office has continued to see high numbers of inmates that we need to house, and according to the North Carolina General Statutes, we're required to provide medical treatment for those inmates. We will soon exhaust all the funds that were budgeted for this current fiscal year for the inmate medical expenses, and we're asking that additional $50,000 in funding for medical expenses for inmates at the downtown jail, and additional $150,000 for medical expenses for the inmates at Burke Kataba District confinement facility be allocated.
All right. Thank you, Sheriff. But, gentlemen, we've had some information on this. Any questions for the sheriff on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one to the sheriff. Are we getting to the point that we need to look at the cost of insured prisoners?
Yes. I mean, I think that's a possibility. There's some sheriff's offices.
Has that ever been priced, or?
Not to my knowledge. There are vendors. In fact, I will be going to the sheriff's training conference next week, and there's usually vendors there that may be able to give us some kind of price. If you want me to ask them to contact the county, I'll be happy to.
Well, don't want to put you on the spot. Any idea what the cost would be?
No, I sure don't have any idea.
We'll wait till you get back there.
All right.
Okay. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Now, the questions for the sheriff on this matter? Here and none, I'll entertain a motion.
Submove, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. That's a motion to appropriate $200,000 in general fund fund balance to the Burke County pension budget for the purpose of paying for inmate medical expenses. All those in favor, please signify by the uplifted hand. I believe that's five to zero. Thank you. Thanks, Sheriff. Brings us to item number two on the decision agenda. General Services' approval of excavator purchase. This will be presented by Miles Champion, our General Services Director. Evening, Miles.
Good evening. Glad to be here. General Services is requesting the purchase of a new Honda HX220L excavator and thumb attachment for the landfill. The engine on the existing 1998 Caterpillar 320 expired recently. The replacement cost for the new engine is $25,000 plus $25,000 for installation. Due to the unit's age and high usage of over 9,000 hours of runtime, the staff believes the purchase of a new excavator is the best option. The Honda HX220L excavator is on state contract number 760H. However, the vendor May heavy equipment has offered the county an additional discount well below the state contract price. The quote of $150,846 also includes a hydraulic thumb attachment. The Honda excavator is being used at landfill currently and meets the staff's expectations. The purchase also eliminates the need for equipment rental, which we had estimated about $39,000. As a reminder, contracts over $90,000 require board approval. Although the county manager has authorized a surplus property up to $30,000, the exact value of an old excavator with a blown engine was unknown at this time. Therefore, a thirty to surplus of 1998 CAT 320 excavator is also requested. Upon approval, the unit will be listed for sale on govdeals.com. The funding for this item is not in the FYI 1718 budget. An appropriation of up to $151,000 of general fund fund balance is necessary to complete the purchase. You have any questions?
Okay. Gentlemen, you've heard this information from Miles. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, yes, I do. My first question would be, I noticed in your documents that you didn't get any trade-in value for the CAT 320. Would they not take a trade-in on this deal? Or is?
I don't think so at this time. We have not approached them about a trade-in. Generally, we can sell it, get a better price on govdeals.com, but we can't look at that to offset that cost.
Well, it looks like you did really good. The Hyundai, according to your documents, was about one-half price of John Deere.
Yes. The CAT replacement was $181,000.
I mean, excuse me, I said John Deere. I meant CAT. I knew that was a CAT.
Yeah, yes.
Dispensing the other ones, you was going to put it on the government contract. Any idea what it'll bring? I know that's a tough question, but.
No. Some similar units that I've seen on govdeals.com range from anywhere from $5,000 to $25,000, depending on your condition of the equipment.
The motor, even though it's blown, is worth about five, so.
Right. In scrap iron, maybe.
Okay. I think that's all I had, sir.
Other questions? Here and none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion.
To approve purchase of the Honda HX220L excavator from May Equipment Company of state contract number 760H for $150,846, along with a general fund fund balance appropriation of $151,000. Further authorize the designation of the 1998 Caterpillar 320 as surplus property.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. You've heard the motion. I'll entertain the vote at this time. All those in favor signify by the uplifted hand. That'll be five to zero.
Mr. Chairman, may I have a PS?
Yes.
Can we assume that whatever money that CAT brings will be applied to the purchase price? It will not come out of general funds or replace it?
I believe the money just falls back into the general fund. That's more a Paul question. Unfortunately, he's not feeling too well to be here with us tonight, but, you know.
He didn't want to answer the tough question.
Yeah, that, he must have known.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Miles. All right. This brings us to item 11, reports and comments. And I'll start down on my far right with our county attorney.
No comments from me tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, James.
Scott and I have both attended the tourism meeting today, and tourism just keeps, seems like it's really growing, especially the brewery segment of the tourism business. We're drawing people from Hickory and other places that are coming to Morganton and other places in the county because of that. And it's exciting to see downtown, both downtown so vibrant at this time. I think, I can remember when Morgan was just so sleepy at night, and it's between the theater and all the other things, there's people walking, and it's good to see a small-town vibrant like it is.
Okay. Thank you, Wayne. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, you have the following amendments in your package, mental health. It's a draft version, but it was approved last Thursday at the regular meeting. You have the JCPC regular meeting on 2/14, plus the finance meeting on 2/28/18. The JCPC regular meeting for March 14 was canceled and rescheduled for Wednesday, tomorrow, March 21, at 8:10. You have a Greater Hickory Metropolitan Transportation Advisory Committee, which met on 2/28/18. Our March meeting is 3/28. The Western Piedmont Air Quality Oversight Committee met this morning at 10:00 a.m. We have great news. Last year, the average for PM readings was 8.7. The state standard is 12. In 1999, that reading was 17.1. The entire state now is under the 12 benchmark or threshold. And the date for the next Water and Air Quality Conference, Lance, you need to pass this on to Kay, is July 26 and 27 at Lenore Vine College. Gentlemen, the reason I voted no on the consent item is I promised you I was trying to get ahold of Warren Daniel and Hugh Blackwell over the Marcy's law, and I agree with that law. I am not voting against the law. My question then, it still is, who's going to pay for it? Hugh Blackwell informed me that across the state thus far, 145 positions have been hired. I asked him who was paying the bill. He said the state was not. That local government, meaning county government, was paying the bill. Kataba County, he informed me, has hired five positions. And it just is real clear that this is another mandate from the state, and we end up paying the money. They provide no funding for it. I received numerous comments of thanks for the boards for not passing early- I received numerous comments of thanks for the boards for not passing early Sunday sales during church hours. I also received a complaint of outrageous water bill. Turned that over to Mr. Champion, and he has wonderfully settled that complaint. So I say thanks to him. And that concludes my report, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Manager?
No, sir. No comments. Thank you.
All right. We'll go to Mr. Garshill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My two reports are in the package, and I know you've had time to read those. I just want to take a moment. I received a call earlier today from the nicest young lady up on Willa Tree. She lives up there. She told me she'd been picking up trash on her road 45 years, and she's getting tired of it. And said she's getting a little elderly now, and she just thought the county was looking bad, which I think, it's ironic that over the last two weeks, we've had more complaints about litter in Burke County than we've ever had. We've been talking about it for a long, long time, and I want to pursue this matter much further. And I apologize, I can't remember that lady's name up on Willa Tree. Maybe somebody could help.
Miss Page, maybe?
Who?
Miss Page?
No, Miss Page. And I wrote it down at the house there, and I do apologize for not remembering her name. But we discussed the Amherst Road going over to our trash area over there, and then we went across Highway 1864 the other day. We've got the same problems. I know our folks are issuing citations to pickup trucks that are not securing their loads, and that trash is falling all over the road. So I just want to make a personal plea to those that are watching today, that if there's anything that anybody can do personally to help us on the litter problem until we can pursue other ways to handle litter in Burke County. I just think we need to try to keep Burke County green and clean. So I urge citizens, I know it's not your job to pick it up, but I pick up my highway, and my wife fusses all the time because I mow about a mile and a half up the highway, but it really looks good when it's finished. So that's what I would like to ask this board to consider as we move forward, whatever we can do to champion the litter problem we have in Burke County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Johnny. And just on that same note, maybe all of us have received some of these emails, but it seems it's not just a Burke County issue, but I'm seeing some emails from all over the state and other places. And I don't know if that has prompted some response, but I have, in my traveling around, I've actually seen some state folks picking up litter in the last week or two. So we do know that highways are the responsibilities of the state, and they do have some responsibility to pick up litter as well. So hopefully, we can continue to ask them to take care of that. Mr. Mulvey?
Well, I agree. We want to put our best foot forward. As Wayne mentioned earlier, we had a Tourism Development Authority meeting earlier, and we've got visitors coming from all over the country. So, you know, we don't want trash on the side of the roads, and I try to do my part, and I'm huge into recycling. And we're talking about all the things that the county's doing. Scott's doing a great job, you know, with the trails and things, bringing these folks in. And so we do want to put our best foot forward. But speaking of totals, in 2017, we got these numbers. We furnished these today. The visitor center had 4,194 visitors, which was a big increase, with 351 of those visitors coming to relocate and asking about relocation in Burke County. So, you know, we talk about a housing shortage, this is going to have to be addressed, and it is being addressed as we speak, but we really need to be aggressive with that. And then with all this visitation, we, you know, I've had people ask me where we rank out of 100 counties as far as visitors. We're currently 42nd. So we're doing very well. And then they gave us some information about Morganton proper, and Wayne mentioned this a few minutes ago, about this downtown was really making inroads. They've seen a 60% increase in foot traffic in the downtown area in the last five years, and they've had 38 new businesses open in the last five years. So a lot of good things going on. And, you know, I get excited about championing what else is going on with the county, because, you know, we do, everybody has a few problems, but, you know, we're really prospering. We're bringing in a lot of jobs. Visitation is really picked up, and I was excited last night. Johnny and I went to Citizens Earth and did a podcast and kind of tooted our horn a little bit about what the county's doing. And I think that's what we should be doing, because there's a lot of good things happening. And Brian, you know, I wish, you know, everybody could see that presentation of what we were able to, you know, accomplish here lately. And it's just, it's fun to be a part of it. But anyway, that's my report.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Lance, anything from your end of the table?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing to report. Just happy to be here.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate you being here tonight and taking care of our minutes and the other work that's done.
Mr. Chairman, you know, we talked over the years about prisoners picking up some of this trash on the roads, and we always, some kind of excuse. We've got some inmates that are not at risk. I mean, if it's child support or something like that, I don't understand why we can't put them out there without any supervision, give them a road to clean up. And if they run, they run. I mean, these aren't high, you know, these aren't real crooks, I mean, you know. But we've talked about this for years and years, about the sheriff's department puts some of their, and I don't see why we can't get some help. Like I say, I don't see that these people need supervision. I mean, if they, like I said, if they run, they run. They're only hurting themselves. But I think we've got such a problem here with trash in this county. I mean, it is, it is a big problem, and it shouldn't be. I mean, it's just, it's just awful. And I don't care what roadway you go down or whatever, it's just driving out to the lake, it's just awful. And I don't see why we can't come to some, get some help, you know, from inmates or whatever. I don't know if there's regulations, but we've talked about this before, I mean, over the years. But it's not getting better, it's getting worse.
Yeah, I agree with you. Some of the email operators recently indicated there's some, maybe current rule about not allowing inmates to do that, but that's something we can certainly follow up on and see what that's all about.
I mean, I'm not talking about putting chain gangs out there or anything. I'm just, some people that are in there are just in there for minor infractions that can't raise bond or whatever. I mean, you know.
All right. Thank you, Wayne. I have listed in our report section also a report from BDI. I met with BDI and DSS and other meetings through the course of the month. I will leave that to your reading pleasure. And let me give you one courtesy reminder. April's pre-agenda meeting will be held at South Mountain State Park in the auditorium on Tuesday, April 3rd, at 3:00 p.m. So please make note of that if you plan to attend the pre-agenda meeting in April. It will not be here, it will be at the South Mountain State Park Auditorium. So make note and be aware of that. All right. I'll recognize Lance for boards and committee vacancy report at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Here are the following opportunities for citizens to get involved in boards and commissions. Hickory Regional Planning Commission, Adult Care and Nursing Home, Community Advisory Committees, Council on Aging, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, City of Morganton Board of Adjustment ETJ, City of Morganton Planning Board ETJ, Voluntary Agriculture Board, Burke County Board of Adjustment and Planning Board, Burke County Parks and Recreation Commission, Western Piedmont Regional Transit Authority Transportation Advisory Board, Partners Behavioral Health Management Board, and Animal Advisory Board. Sorry, go more. Board of Health, the Regional E Development Corporation, and the Veterans Service Board.
All right. Thank you, Lance. I would encourage citizens to consider these boards and committees. If you can help on any of those, please contact our clerk, and she'd be glad to give you the information as to how to apply for those volunteer positions. All right. At this time, we do have need for a closed session tonight. I'll ask that we adjourn at this time, and we'll take about a five-minute recess before we go into closed session. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to go into closed session.
Excuse me. Motion to go into closed session. Wayne made that motion? And all in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Thank you very much. We'll take a five-minute recess. Opposed, no. Thank you very much.